Twenty twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open mean law. General laws, chapter thirty eight, paragraph twenty, and the governor's March fifteenth.
This conference will now be recorded.
Order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Howard's planning board is being conducted by a remote participation. No in person attendance of members in the public will be permitted, but every effort made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen or view this meeting while in progress may also do so by logging in or calling in as specified by and above on the agenda. First matter on the agenda this evening is a continued case PB two thousand twenty dash eleven Gerald E Burke owner care of William Crowe Esquire. And I think we've already read this into the record earlier, so I'll hear from Mr. Crowe, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can everybody hear me all right? So this is a petition for a detached accessory residential structure with a bedroom. This greenhouse wanted us to provide some additional information on the plan. That's why it was continued. And Moran Engineering has provided that information, and she indicates in her staff report that she's now satisfied with that. But basically what we have is on the on the plan that you should have a copy of that the latest revision was made thirteen two thousand twenty by Moran Engineering. It shows an existing garage to the believe nineteen ninety-two. We're not proposing to make any change to the footprint to that garage. What we want to do is renovate the inside. As per the plan, the the plans that were submitted one two thousand nineteen and have a bedroom, a kitchen without a stove. And we understand the petition understands that this is not a rental lettable unit. You will see in the staff report that there were some questions about the septic system and Rick Judd from Moran Engineering has worked all that out with Megan Eldridge, the health agent, so that they're fine with the septic septic system. Once we modify it, they'll have to sign off on it in order for us to get the occupancy permit. The unexpected twist that with regard to the Conservation Commission, that they said, oh, we've never approved that garage in the first place since like nineteen ninety-two. I'm sure I'm sure Amy has just lost the file or under her desk or something, but in all seriousness, they they don't have a file on it. So we would have to go subsequent to this hearing, we would have to seek after the fact approval by the Conservation Commission. And the comments from, I believe it was from Katie, indicate that if the after the fact approval was given by the Conservation Commission for the structure itself, the footprint basically of the structure itself, then the proposed modifications of the interior of the garage or the change of use to a residential unit would not be an issue with the Conservation Commission is my understanding. So I discussed that last week with Charlene, and she says in her staff report in her comments in number two, that the comments from the Conservation should not should not impede the planning board's ability to render a decision in this matter. So that again, we go to apply for assuming that this board saw fit to grant a special permit this evening, and then we apply for a building permit and an occupancy permit, Health and Conservation would have to both sign off on that before we could get our ultimately get our occupancy permit. So those are your safeguards on those. And those, as you know, those are not your jurisdiction anyway, so they weigh in. So we're we're proposing for this to to construct this detached accessory residential structure with bedrooms and seeking a special permit on the ground that it would not adversely affect the neighborhood, that the site is an appropriate location for the use, there would be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, and adequate and appropriate facilities are provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. We would ask that the board grant the special permit this evening.
Okay, could we hear the planning directors' report? Are you done, Bill? I'm sorry.
I'm done. Thank you.
Could we hear the planning directors' report, please?
Sure. Charlene's comments are that the applicant's representative was notified March twenty fourth twenty twenty via email that the application was estimated was incomplete. The revised plans submitted addresses the comments concerns raised by planning. As Mr. Cole said, the comments from Conservation should not impede on the planning board's ability to render a decision. The board has any questions about Conservation, I'm here, I can answer them. And third from comment from Charlene, standard conditions are recommended along with a condition that restricts the rental letting of this space.
Mr. Chairman, Bill Crowley, and I do have one further comment. I'm sorry if I may interject that.
Go ahead.
My client just my client just bought the property in the last year or two. So it was not my client who constructed this, who built this structure. So he was this this all came as a big surprise to him when Conservation said, oh, you never got approval in the first place. So it's not a question of him getting caught with his hand in the cookie jar. He does not build this structure.
You're talking about the existing garage?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Is there anybody on the on the board that wishes to ask any questions of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, Craig Chadwick, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Counselor, this is not then an application for an accessory apartment as the accessory apartments that we approved, the town approved, I don't know, a year or two ago. Is that correct?
It's correct. It's not that it's not an application for an accessory apartment. It's separate animal.
And it and it's not an accessory apartment because it doesn't have a full kitchen? Question.
Correct. It's correct, and therefore it cannot be rented. And that's one of the proposed restrictions that the town planner is that you have in her staff report.
And the only thing that's causing it not to be a full kitchen, I think you said it it has a kitchen with everything but a stove. Is that correct?
That's correct, and that's what she refers to in her finding the fact, proposed finding the fact that number four accessory structure will not contain a stove and therefore is not a kitchen and not an accessory apartment as defined in the bylaw.
Okay.
And that board has found, I obtained several special permits from this board, similar structures in the past four or five years on that basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else on the board have any questions from Mr. Crowe?
Yeah, this is Craig Chadwick still following up on that. Counselor, then if a stove was added to the space, it would you would then back to the board for a permit for an accessory apartment then?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else? Okay. Can we get to adopt the findings of fact, Mary?
Joe, can you just open it up to the public in case there are other comments first?
Oh, sure. Anybody in the public who wishes to be heard? Hearing none to the findings of fact, Mary.
If I may.
Somebody wish to speak?
I
I'm sorry, please speak up again.
Close the public hearing. When you get to it, I think your first motion is to vote on the waivers before you get to the findings of fact. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Bill. So, Joe, this is Mary. I move that we
All those on the roll call, Mary Masiallo?
Hi.
Arthur Rose?
Hi.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Phil Stoltz?
Phil Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry?
Duncan Berry, aye.
Joe McParland, aye. Okay, we've closed the the public hearing.
Joe, this is Mary.
Do we want to go to the findings of fact now, do we?
No, we want to do the waivers. So I move that we waive any and all commercial or residential requirements of the bylaw that are not applicable to this petition.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Roll call vote, Mary Masiallo?
Aye.
David, no, I'm sorry, Arthur Rose?
Aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Phil Stoltz?
Phil Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry?
Duncan Berry, aye.
Joe McParland, aye. Go ahead, Mary. Have I got you, Mary Masiallo?
Yep.
Okay. And we do a vote on a motion on the findings of fact?
Yep, this is Mary. I move that we adopt the following findings of fact. One, the property is located within the R dash M zoning district. Two, the use is consistent with the zoning code and will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Three, the site is an appropriate location for such use. Four, the accessory structure will not contain a stove and therefore is not a kitchen and is not an accessory apartment as defined in section three twenty-five dash two word usage and definitions dwelling common single family with accessory apartment. Five, the proposed parking area will provide sufficient off street parking which meets the minimum requirements of town code.
Second.
And a roll call, Mary Masiallo?
Aye.
Arthur Rose?
Aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Phil Stoltz?
Phil Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry?
Duncan Berry, aye.
Joe McParland, aye. Okay, move on then if we can, Mary, to a vote on the special permit?
Joe, this is Mary. I move that we approve with conditions the use special permit and waivers for PB twenty twenty dash eleven Gerald E Burke pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, section three twenty-five dash thirteen table one use regulations and three twenty-five dash fourteen Q to also the upper level of detached residential accessory garage table into an accessory structure with a bedroom for property located at twenty-two Sunrise Road, map twenty-six parcel E two dash three in the R dash M and W dash R zoning district. The approval is based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard with the above findings in the following conditions. One, the accessory structure is not an accessory apartment pursuant to three twenty-five dash two word usage and definitions dwelling single family with accessory apartment and shall not contain a kitchen. Two, all board of health and Conservation Commission or requirements shall be met. Three, there shall be no rental or letting of this bedroom space. Four, any changes of the use or changes to the plan may be subject to further planning board review. Five, the special permit decision will probably be recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deans.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And a roll call, Mary Masiallo?
Aye.
Arthur Rose?
Aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Phil Stoltz?
Phil Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry?
Duncan Berry, aye.
Joe McParland, aye. I think that completes that.
Mr. Chairman, who's second is that motion?
Thank you.
Who was the second on that motion, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, that was me.
I'm sorry.
Craig Chadwick seconded.
Craig Chadwick was the second.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the board's attention. Thank you.
The next matter on the agenda is the amendment to the Howard zoning code. And I I move that we reopen the amendment to the Howard zoning code. That is, that the that that amendment, which is to amend the Code of the Town of Howard two five dash four and attachment for the zoning map by extending the industrial IL zoning district westerly along Queen Anne Road and existing IL zoning districts as shown on the amended zoning map dated January twenty-third two thousand twenty, a copy of which is on town clerk's office.
Joe, this is Mary.
Go ahead.
I move that I move that we close the public hearing.
Second, Craig Chadwick, second.
Okay, and roll call, Mary Masiallo?
Aye.
Aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Phil Stoltz?
Phil Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry?
Duncan Berry, aye.
Joe McParland? Now, Mary, are you ready with another motion?
I I don't think there's anything else to do, Joe. We're taking no action, correct?
I think I think you move you have to move to close it.
Yeah, that's what we just voted.
Oh, okay.
You opened it and we moved to close it.
All right, done. All right, move on to the public meeting. First matter is approval of required plans pursuant to Mass General Law chapter eighty-one P and four hundred dash nine of the Code of the Town of Howard. PB two thousand twenty fifteen David Truage as applicant seeks endorsement of a two lot A and R plan entitled Plan of Land in Howard. For James Gunn, Janet F. Gunn, Sarah Osborne, David Truage dated January twentieth two thousand twenty prepared by Terry A. Warner PLS for property located at number six and twelve Village Green, map fifteen parcel L one dash six and L one dash seven respectively. The parcels are in the RM zoning district. Anybody have anything they want to say on it?
No, sir.
Okay, staff comments. We hear from the planning directors substitute.
Charlene's comments are as follows. Number one, this appears to be a simple land swap between number six and number twelve Village Green. Number two, both lots will retain the required frontage of one hundred fifty feet. Three, and most important, if the board does vote to endorse this plan, it is unclear as to when that will be able to occur. House currently closed with limited access for specific employees. Actually, employees, most of us are all back now, just so you are aware, and endorsement may have to wait until after or will have to wait until after the declared emergency is over. Conservation, police and fire had no comments. Health had no issues or concerns with moving the lot line, provided that the setbacks are all slow maintained.
Is there anybody who wishes to be heard on this matter? Hearing none. I have the plan in front of me.
I believe the applicant was on the call, Joe.
Oh, okay, I apologize. Mr. Truage?
I'm this is Sarah Osborne. My brother is also on the call.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Now I can.
I am, so we're here. I don't think we have anything to add beyond what we've what we've submitted, but we're here for any questions that you have.
Anybody on the board have any questions with respect to Mr. Truage's A and R request? I see none or I hear none. Hang on. That's the whole thing. All right, so we need to close the public hearing again, do we?
Nope, there's no public hearing, Joe.
Okay, thank you again. And we need a motion for a positive find.
So I move that we adopt the following findings of fact. Said plan does not constitute a subdivision as the way shown on the plan is a way in existence when the subdivision control law became effective in the town and has, in the opinion of the planning board, sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of land abutting thereon or served thereby, and for the installation of municipal services to serve such land in the buildings erected or to be erected thereon.
Okay, no, we don't need a vote on that. What we do need, there is a suggested motion. Can you make that, Mary, please?
That was the suggested finding of fact, Joe.
I don't have any. I don't have a give me a minute. I don't have any suggested findings of fact, Mary. Now maybe it's
It's on it's on the back.
It's on the back page, Joe. It's it's right above the board vote. Right under the Conservation, Police and Fire and Health comments.
Okay, but didn't you just make those that positive finding?
Yep, so that's why I just moved. It's the second.
Okay, and roll call. Stoltz, second. So we'll have a roll call, Mary Masiallo?
Aye.
Arthur Rose?
Aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Phil Stoltz?
Phil Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry?
Duncan Berry, aye.
Joe McParland, aye. All right, Mary, we have to do anything else on this?
Yep, we have to take a vote. Joe, this is Mary. I move that the that we go to on to endorse the A and R plan entitled Land in Howard's map prepared for E. James Gunn and Janet E. Gunn, Sarah Osborne, David Truage dated January twentieth twenty twenty prepared by Terry A. Warner PLS.
Second.
Craig Chadwick seconded your motion, and we'll have a roll call vote, Mary Masiallo?
Aye.
Arthur Rose?
Aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Phil Stoltz?
Phil Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry?
Duncan Berry, aye.
And Joe McParland, aye. I think that completes that matter. We'll move on to Mr. Mercy, I think. Am I right? Can I just give you a minute? Okay, the issue is that either the person sees and versus the A and R and I P A takes no action. And could we get the planning staff comments, please?
Staff comments. This appears to be a simple land swap between this parcel and two abutting parcels, which contains sufficient frontage per note four on the plan. If the board does not if the board does vote to endorse this plan, it is unclear as to when that will be able to occur. House currently closed with limited access for specific endorsement will have to wait until after the declared emergency is over. Police and fire have no comments. Conservation, both parcels will have a portion within the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction. The department has no issue with the division of the property, but when developed, it may be subject to conservation review. All future construction must be sixty feet away from the edge of wetland, and any work within a hundred feet will require mitigation, which at times can be difficult to achieve on on undisturbed lots. Health has no issues or concerns. If the lots are even ever further developed, no variances from Title V or local requirements will be granted.
Is there anybody on the board who wishes to be heard? It would be wrapping my papers here. Okay, it looks to me like we're ready for a vote on the board if we can, please, Mary.
Joe, this is Mary. I move that we adopt the following findings. The said plan does not constitute a subdivision as the way shown on the plan is a public way maintained and used as a public way and has, in the opinion of the planning board, sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land abutting thereon or served thereby, and for the installation of municipal services to serve such land in the buildings erected or to be erected thereon.
Doug, second, Duncan Berry.
Okay, and we'll have a roll call, Mary Masiallo?
Aye.
Arthur Rose?
Aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Phil Stoltz?
Phil Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry?
Duncan Berry, aye.
Joe McParland, aye. Move on to a motion of the board, Mary.
The gentleman who we endorsed through A and R plan entitled Division Plan of Off Blue Heron Landing dated April one twenty twenty prepared by Jay Sadias Elders PLS.
We have Mr. Chadwick, second.
Second.
And we'll have a vote. Mary Masiallo?
Aye.
Arthur Rose?
Aye.
Craig Chadwick?
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson?
Alan Peterson, aye.
Phil Stoltz?
Phil Stoltz, aye.
Duncan Berry.
Duncan Berry, aye.
And Joe McPallan, aye. I believe that completes Mr. Mercy's matter. Anybody disagree? Okay.
We're all set, Joe.
Go ahead, Mary.
I said you're all set with this one.
Okay, I thought so. All right, we'll move on to, uh, the James R. Nickman, care of Philip O. Sholomini, PLS. Is Mr. Sholomini available? Excuse me. Maybe he is.
Mr. Chairman, Bill Stokes is also on this petition.
Say again, Bill.
I'm also representing the applicant on this petition along with Mr. Sholomini.
Who's that?
Attorney Bill.
Who's also representing?
Writer and Will Cox.
Oh, Billy Crowe. Okay, Bill. All right, then we'll hear from Mr. Crowe, if you will, please.
I'm not sure if he's finished reading the petition.
Uh, let me do it. PB 202017, James R. Nickman, applicant care of Philip O. Sholomini, PLS, seeks endorsement of a two-rot A and R entitled Plan of Land in Howard showing a division of P1 CM2, LCP 10688P, scale 1 to 40, dated March 6, 2020, prepared by writer and Wilcox for a property located at Zero Deep Hole Road, map 16, parcel M1B and M1-B1. The parcels are in the R M zoning district. And the board will hear from Mr. Keapman or his representative.
Attorney Bill Crowe speaking. And I believe Mr. Nickman is also, is that correct, Jim? It was earlier. Mr. Sholomini is here.
He's the landsman there, I understand.
Yes. Both lots have frontage on Deep Hole Road, a public way. So I think that's pretty straightforward. The way the town planner suggested or advised the engineer and the petitioner and myself to proceed here was to have the A and R plan approved by you folks, and then subsequently we would file a petition for a special permit for access over something other than the frontage. So we'd be coming up from the south, from a right-of-way inadvent, from the south to get at at least one of the lots. But that's subsequent to this. And then at that time, then we would have to show that that, A, would have adequate frontage and be able to support emergency vehicles and the like.
Please, planning board representative, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, it's Craig. I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Chadwick.
Thank you. Counselor, from looking at the map that was submitted with the application, it appears that the current entrance and egress to the property is off of Old Wharf Road versus Deep Hole. Is that correct?
Phil, are you listening, Phil?
Old Wharf Road is, that's correct. That would, that is the roadway to the south that Bill Crowe designed.
Right. So, go ahead. So, the suggestion of the town planner was that were these to be developed at some later time, that you may not necessarily have the frontage off of Old Wharf and would somehow have to construct frontage or access to these two properties off of Deep Hole? My understanding?
No. No. I was trying to just stop it.
I'm sorry?
Kind of just the opposite. For a lot to be buildable, it has to, under the zoning bylaw, it has to have frontage, adequate frontage on a road. And then the bylaw says ordinarily you have to have your access off your frontage. So you'd have to have your access to the lot off of Deep Hole. But we can file for a special permit with the planning board later to get a special permit to have access off of something other than the frontage on Deep Hole. It would be access off of Old Wharf.
Okay. Yep, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else on the board have any questions?
Joe, this is Mary.
Go ahead.
Do we have Amy Reed, Charlene's comments, just into the rapid, please?
Of course. I was going to do that next. Could you go ahead and read the planning director's comments?
Sure. Each lot shows frontage along Deep Hole Road. However, it appears that access for this parcel or the parcels would need to be over something other than frontage. If the board does vote to endorse this plan, it is unclear as to when they will be able to occur. Town Hall is currently closed with limited access for employees. Endorsement will have to wait until after the declared emergency is over. Police and fire have no comments. Conservation, both parcels will have a portion within Conservation Commission's jurisdiction. The department has no issue with the division of the property, but when developed, it may be subject to conservation review. All future construction must be 60 feet away from the edge of wetland, and any work within 100 feet will require mitigation, which can be difficult on undisturbed lots. Health has no issues or concerns. If the lots are ever developed, no variances from Title V or located requirements will be granted.
Anybody on the board have any questions or comments?
No, sir.
Okay, can we get a motion then, Mary?
Joe, this is Mary. I move that we adopt the following findings. Said plan does not constitute a subdivision as the way shown on the plan is a public way, maintained and used as a public way, and has, in the opinion of the planning board, sufficient width, suitable grades and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of land abutting thereon or served thereby, installation of municipal services to serve such land in the buildings erected or to be erected thereon.
Craig Chadwick, seconded.
And we'll have a roll call vote on her motion. Mary Masiallo.
Aye.
Hi.
Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
Bill Stokes.
Bill Stokes, aye.
Duncan Berry.
Duncan Berry, aye.
Joe McPallan, aye. Okay, that completes that, doesn't it?
No, one more. This is Mary.
Hold on, I mean, that's complete. What else do we have to do with that case, Mary?
Mary, no, that doesn't. There's one more vote. So I move that we endorse, I move that we endorse the A and R plan entitled Plan of Land in Howard's Mass, showing a division of lots B-1, C and 2, Land Court Plan 106-B, scale 1 inch equals 40 feet, dated March 6, 2020, prepared by writer and Wilcox.
Okay, and do I have a second to Mary's motion?
Bill Stokes, second.
Bill Stokes, second. Roll call. Mary Masiallo.
Aye.
Arthur Rose.
Aye.
Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
Bill Stokes.
Bill.
Duncan Berry.
Duncan Berry, aye.
Joe McPallan, aye. Anything else on that one?
Nope, you're done.
Thank you, Paul. I'm just gonna, let's put the minutes off till we meet. We don't need to have, we don't have to do those now. I don't think. Anybody have any strong feelings about that?
Well, we can.
Okay, is there any old business?
Mr. Chair, is it okay if I go back to it and just make a motion to approve the minutes of May 12, 2020?
I'll second those, Mary.
Who's that?
Alan Peterson.
Who made the motion?
Alan.
And Mary, you second?
I seconded, yep.
And a roll call on the minutes. Mary Masiallo.
Aye.
Arthur Rose.
Aye.
Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
Bill Stokes.
Bill Stokes, aye.
Duncan Berry.
Duncan Berry, aye.
Joe McPallan, aye. Okay, is there any old business? You might have some old members, but I don't think we have any old business.
See for yourself.
And any briefings or reports by members of the planning board?
Mr. Chairman, it's Craig. I don't have a report, but I have a question, maybe unanswerable at this time. I noticed that the, with the, what is it, the phase reopening that we're in, that the Board of Selectmen met in the Griffin Room last night, or I don't, last, whenever. And I wondered if there's any comeback. They still did a virtual meeting, but four or five, I guess all five of the Selectmen were in the same room, although, you know, six feet, social distancing and so forth. Maybe Amy, I don't know if you have any knowledge as to any other plans? No?
I know that they are working on it in order to bring more boards back, but we don't know a timeline yet. Most boards are larger than the Boards of Selectmen, so we have to make sure that everybody has a safe space.
Understood. Okay, thanks.
Is my understanding correct that we may not meet on June 9?
Charlene has said that your next meeting is June 25.
Yeah, I thought so. So we were scheduled to meet on June 9, but because I had talked to her several times, and there's no reason for us to meet on June 9, then we won't meet on June 9. So our next regularly scheduled meeting will be June 25.
Which is a Thursday, I might point out.
Thank you. I didn't notice it. Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Mary.
I was just going to ask if you were ready for a motion to adjourn.
I am ready for a motion to adjourn.
I'm ready.
And seconded by Mr. Chadwick. Mary Masiallo.
Aye.
David Ara, no, not David, Arthur Rose.
Aye.
Craig Chadwick.
Craig Chadwick, aye.
Alan Peterson.
Alan Peterson, aye.
Bill Stokes.
Bill Stokes, aye.
Duncan Berry.
Goodnight, everyone.